I'd like to call the village board of trustees, meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our new trustee, Ann Price. Ann?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Audience members are requested to sign on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Roll call.
Keith King?
Here.
Ann Price?
Here.
Jim Moore?
Here.
Mike Streeter?
Here.
And Mike Well?
Here.
Stand. Village decisions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements? Okay. Staff reports. Library Heather?
Okay, thank you. This, it's gonna be a busy week. We have, on Thursday evening, we have the wordsmiths have an author from Fond du Lac coming. His name is Mark Ingalls, and so that'll be at 7:00 PM. And also Saturday, this Saturday, the 10th, we have our book club meeting, and we're reading a Kate Morton book called The Forgotten Garden. So that starts at 9:00 AM. We're always looking for new members up for the group. And I just had completed the annual report at the end of February, so it's a good thing to have off my to-do list. So, thank you.
It's always a fun job, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks Heather. Administration.
I've been working with, I remember last fall, we had started revamping our website, and it kinda got put on the back burner because of converting to a couple new upgrades in our software. And also now we're starting to work a little bit more, getting prepared for the financial audit, which starts Wednesday this week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But I think we're getting pretty close, and I'm hoping possibly even this week that we can, we can go live with it. Other than that, it's been the normal PC problems. We've done a number of Windows updates, which have caused some other problems that I had to back, some of the updates back out again to get it to fix the problems, but just part of the process. Thank you.
Hey Chuck, quick question. Is this a magazine that you subscribe to?
City and county, no.
For the village?
I do governing and the leagues.
Because well, since I'm delivering down here now, I noticed my name on this one, and any mail that comes to any trustee, I mean...
Should go in the box.
They understand how important that is, I mean, sending to you the mail, and that's a, you know, a federal thing. So I mean, I understand if, I mean, I see some stuff with Karen Meads' name on there, and stuff like that, understandably, but if it's a current trustee, appreciate it if you get to that person.
Should be.
Yeah, this is like the first one I've gotten, so.
Okay.
Anything, even if it, even if they think it's, you know, not significant, it might be to one of us.
Sure.
Okay. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. This past week, we finished our bloodborne pathogen refresher update. Not the most exciting training, but something that we have to do, and we were able to get that done department-wide, so we're up to date there. And as I put in my weekly report, we had another resignation. Our newest officer resigned for personal reasons. We have a PFC meeting scheduled for tomorrow to accept that resignation and to talk about a hiring process for a replacement. That's all I have.
Fire, any other questions?
Thanks. This past week's been pretty busy with our hiring process. We've called back, I think Adam called five people back, to move forward in the process. They range from EMTs to paramedics, but we're looking to kinda buff up our staff a little bit, especially in the ALS side for staffing 502. Had a little computer problem this past week, and some stuff got shuffled around, so majority of my work is now gone. So I'm piecing things back together as I can. I did have some of it on a flash drive thankfully, but my profile here disappeared, so once I get all my reports back up to date, which may take some time, I'll start handing them out again. I just wanted to let you guys know that. That's all I have.
I am still working on trying to recover some of that, too.
Okay. Thank you Jake. Public Works, Nick.
Thank you. We had a bid opening last Tuesday. We really don't have bid openings anymore like we used to. It's all done online, so we don't actually attend anything. Nobody shows up. They just do it online for the Indiana Avenue project, which we're discussing later. Darren and I had been working on the utility budgets for quite some time, but you know, when we were actually gonna bring it to the board, we always go through it again and put some finishing touches on it and look things over a little closer. Made some minor changes to it last week, and finally got the wages in there and updated. That's, somebody else does that for us. I was on a conference call, I attended a conference call last week at John St. Peter's office as a representative of the OSG, to discuss with the city, they're doing a de-amonification project at the plant, which will help with biological phosphorus removal. We have a long, we had a long conversation on how that is going to be paid for throughout the districts, whether it's, you know, there's a, there's a, it's really not spelled out in the contract how these projects are paid for. What we've done in the past is, they've taken out clean water fund loans, and then they just, they carry the loan, and we just shared a portion of those payments, which is probably what's gonna happen with this one. But we're starting to work through that process. In regards to the middle school, high school site plan, we've already kind of completed the review of the Friendship Learning Center plan. Now they're moving on to the next project at the high school. There's not a whole lot going on there as far as the site goes. That's really what we met about, but they're definitely changing the way the parking lots flow and ingress and egress into those parking lots. Had a good conversation with Darren, police chief, about traffic concerns. I think there's, there's a concern at McKinley and Prospect. I don't think this is changing that concern, but that's something that we're gonna probably have to keep an eye on in the future, because I know that's, it's an issue. There's congestion whenever schools getting let out or events, so we'll keep an eye on that in the future. Also, I had mentioned, I think I had mentioned at earlier time, the proposed legislation for artificial wetlands, which would potentially affect our business part. Chuck and I have, have kinda been in on the meetings and helped write some of this legislation. As far as we know, it's sitting on the governor's desk for signature, so we're waiting. It would be a good thing for us if that got signed, so it passed both the Assembly and the Senate. So, waiting to hear that news, and hopefully we can move forward with some things out there, getting that cleaned up without dealing with these artificial wetlands. That's all I have.
Hey Nick, quick question for the phosphorus issue. Is that, do they have any indication if that's gonna be based on what we're paying for capacity or what we're actually using for capacity?
Well, that's a good question. That actually came up in the conversation, and their initial thought was it should be based on our plant capacity, which we are adamantly opposed to. It doesn't make any sense. So we're, that's the route we're going, is we should be paying for what we're using, not what we purchased. So that's definitely the route we're going with it, and that's the way the contract reads. But their initial reaction, their initial thought was just, well, it's just based on what you want at the plant. Well, that's not the case, because this project doesn't necessarily affect it. So yeah, we're definitely on top of that, but that is a good question. That's exactly one of the points that we need to discuss.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thanks Nick. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following village board meetings. February 15th, February 19th, and February 2nd. February 19th, one at 6:30 and one at 6:00. Improve invoices, authorize checks to be drawn in the respective funds. General Fund, $135,369.71. Library Fund, $1,030.74. EMS Fund, $1,671.46. Capital Projects, $3,007.25. Water Department, $10,181.56. Wastewater Department, $317,716.46. Community Development, $7,516.98. Stormwater Fund, $257.54, for a grand total of $477,077.70. And approve or deny a operator's license for Gina O'Neill, or Jen's Bar, wanting to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a...
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I will. Second by Streeter to approve the consent agenda. Questions?
I have one. Page 5, 3362 is the word number 10, scratch that, $770.
I can answer that. That's for 502's paperwork.
Okay.
So the packets are, and I can bring an example in the next meeting, but we have to have the hospitals fill out a couple of different sheets in order to accept a transport, and that's what that's for, so.
Okay. Just curious on this part.
That's the same one I asked on Keith. It was a new name I hadn't recognized.
Yeah.
If not all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Administration, discussion and possible action on approving electrical work in the fire EMS bay.
Do you wanna start with that?
Yeah, I can talk about that. We've been having a lot of issues with our vehicles charging out in the bay, and talking with Darren Parsons, Mark and Rob from DPW. We kinda looked at how everything's plugged in in the bay, and how it's set up back on the breaker panel, and the wiring itself, I guess. And obviously, it's aged, and probably about a month, month and a half ago now, over the weekend, we had three vehicles dead at the same exact time. So obviously, responding to a call, you know, that would've been an issue. Thankfully, our guys were over here, and you know, they do their rig checks every day, and that's how they found it. And it also led to us finding the alternator was bad on 504, but like I said, you know, they're just not charging properly. The amperage isn't right, and Darren knows a lot more about the technical aspect, I guess, on how to do the wiring, but from everything that they're recommending to us, it needs to be redone.
Part of what's happening is kicking the GSCI's out, and the breaker panel is maxed out. There's actually some panels that have split breakers on them already, which I don't believe any of the charging system is. The charging system's not on a dedicated circuit. It's hooked into some of the outlets throughout the bay. So what this project would do is put the sub-panel in one of the other rooms. It would give us more capacity in other functions if we need to add anything to the breaker panel again, and it would put a dedicated circuit, three dedicated circuits actually for the trucks to be plugged into.
Mike had some questions, you know, he had...
I didn't read any mail I got on either, so I...
That's fine. I think I had Darren call Coleman Electric, because they were the ones that you had questioned if they included some of the items.
Right. One of the things was the three plugs in the main disconnect panel. That is included in his quote.
I didn't see it listed in there.
It's not broke out separate, but it's, it's part of his quote.
There was two questions, I don't remember if the other one...
And then the other one was the twist lock plugs.
Right.
And the way it's wired right now, the drops all have ties on them to keep them from pulling out of the outlets up there. He's recommending that we go with direct wire instead of a twist lock plug. Even with a twist lock, if a truck doesn't disconnect, it's gonna pull the conduit and everything down.
I mean, the other guy had that in his quote, that's why I was used to...
He had twist locks in his quote.
Right, so are you guys comfortable with...
With direct wire.
...getting what we want? Okay, just wanna make sure, let me see what's up.
Nick?
I, this is kind of an off-topic thought, but I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, but I'm assuming this exhaust system is going to need no electrical power also?
Potentially, yeah.
So that, I'm just suggesting maybe...
We're putting a 24 breaker box.
To make sure you're having enough room for that, too, because this could take care of that, too.
Yeah, I think there's what, 29?
24 breakers.
24, yeah. And we only use three of them.
But just to maybe just have the electrician check in.
Yeah.
Check into that. Maybe you already did. I just was bringing it up.
Good thought. And the handling exhaust system?
Yeah, I would assume so. I'd have to ask him, but...
Is that three-phase?
Yes, it's three-phase.
And the reason that, you know, some of the, on the right of it talks about what are some of the options, or what we can do if we do approve it, how we could pay for it, it's, I can't say it's not a lot of money, but it's not horrendous either. It's around $4,000, and it's a couple options if we do decide to go ahead with it, which, you know, based on some of the things Jake was saying, it's, it surely seems like it's needed. One of the things that, if I heard right, is as you, right now, these GFI, GFC?
GSCI.
GFCI boxes are kind of hidden out of the way in a back room where they'll be set up so that if they would, for any reason, you walk by them, they're right out in the, in plain view. They actually have sirens on them or some kind of alert?
Yeah, it'll be an audible alarm, and then there's a light on them, correct?
Yes.
So it'll be...
There's a light and a buzz if they're tripped.
So it just seems like it's a much more fail-safe way of making sure that these response vehicles are being plugged in and are being charged.
Okay. Any suggestions on what we pay for?
See if we want to go ahead with that, I guess, first of all.
I support moving ahead with it. I would like to go with item number one, approve the bid from Coleman Electric, but you know, every year we're always over budget on a lot of things, and see if we can use that funding, I mean, first, and then if we have to, we can always go to the fund balance if we have to, you know.
And it kinda defaults into that, you know, if it does go over, I mean, that's what will happen, is it'll come out of fund balance anyway, but I thought, you know, like you said, just kinda look at typically our underspending, what we're...
Budgeting, so.
Yeah.
You're making that motion?
I'll make that motion if...
So you know...
Option number one, approve the bid from Coleman Electric, which potentially overspent the facilities budget.
I'll second that motion.
I wish my will, second by Streeter to approve the bid from Coleman Electric. Any other questions? Discussion, Mike?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna put my plate down.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we keep track of like our spend year-to-date versus budget, so we can kinda keep an eye on where we are?
Yes, we do.
Is that a report that we will get?
You can request it.
Okay.
Typically, that's up to our department, that's to kinda keep an eye on their own budgets.
Okay. Just because, I mean, it'll give us an idea of like...
When or if it does happen.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Chuck, just response to that. Front office always prints us those Cassell reports of everyone, to show us what percentage of the budget we've spent. Is that something that you should award for...
No, and actually, each of the departments do it differently. You're the one that we get a report. Some of them, Jake, now, there's this new part of the new software upgrade that's called MyView. You can just call them up anytime you want on your desktop.
Okay.
So I mean, it's something that if you do stop in sometime, we can go through that and like explain it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
We gotta get that back on there, I think.
It is there, it's just you're not seeing it. It's there. So.
Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second, and you all in favor of approving the Coleman Electric bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number two. Discussion, possible action on approving the bid for Indiana Avenue Street project. Nick?
Thank you. As I mentioned, we had the bid opening last week. Our estimate was 184. I think we budgeted right at 200,000, I think is what's in the CIP. I didn't look it up, but I'm almost positive it's 200,000. But remember that it will include some engineering costs. The low bid came in at 165. I can attach the bid tab if you've, if you've got that, 165, 96850. And the next closest bid was very close to 168, and then 174, and then 217, so we feel very comfortable with the number. We feel very comfortable with the contractor. As I mentioned, that contractor has done, they did Harrison Street most recently. They also did Winnebago Street, so we've, we've had good results with the contractor. So our recommendation is to award the bid.
Need a motion to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Pachansky Construction Incorporated in the amount of $165,968.50.
I'll second it.
Most by Streeter, second by King to approve the low bid of 165, 96850. Any other discussion?
I just want a long question. Have they had a green bay?
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number three. Discussion, possible action under the view of ordinance 10-07, snow and ice removal.
Yeah, I asked Chuck to put this one on there. So I just, I wanted to discuss this and get what the rest of the board's feeling is that, when I read that, the snow and ice removal, you know, it says responsibility of owner, et cetera, shall be the responsibility of every property owner within the village who has sidewalks or budding their property, remover caused to be removed, accumulated snow and ice, within 24 hours after it ceases to fall. Well, I called Chuck and I talked to Nick also about, I took a new route out in the village, and it's, there's a sidewalk, it's across the street from where the northern aluminum foundry was, and a lot of kids go to, you know, walk to school from gaslight terrace. You know, and that's the reason that, one of those reasons that, for the cell for redoing Prospect Avenue was, you know, provide that safety for those kids to walk. Well, you know, it snowed, this is a few weeks ago, it had snowed, and the sidewalks were cleared, and then the plow came by and, and covered the sidewalks, and I just called to see if we could get those, you know, to get the, the snow taken off. And my discussion with Nick was like, you know, that, I'm just kinda wondering, I, this seems pretty straightforward to me, you know, remove the ice and snow within 24 hours after it ceases to fall. And I'm just, and there was like the hesitation, there was like, I had a call back a few days later, finally got some notices out there, and I think we had talked about it the last meeting, and then, you know, there was a warm-up, and I know it kinda upset some people to get those notices like right before the warm-up, but if they would've went out prior to that, you know, Nick was like, well, you know, there could be possible blowing and, and stuff, and I'm just wondering if everybody else, like on the board, kinda sees that also. The way I read it is, you shovel after 24 hours, after it stops snowing. I mean, yeah, you could get blowing snow, it's winter in Wisconsin, I mean, that, that happens. I mean, in that case, if it's, you know, if we're anticipating wind, or a possible snowfall, you know, later in the week, we'd never shovel anything. So I was, I was just kinda curious what the rest of the board felt, because I just, it's a safety issue, you know, and it has to do with kids, you know, I don't, I, it's, I've had other issues, you know, calling down to get stuff done, and, and I, and I get that argument, and I just, you know, it's someone's opinion of how, you know, what their, what their, you know, vision of that, or what their, their take of it, and it seems pretty straightforward, and I, and Chuck, I thought I had asked you to put the pet littering one on there also, maybe I missed it, but...
I know we had talked about it, but I didn't realize you wanted that one.
Can I mention that one, too, since we're talking about ordinances or, or just...
You'd like to.
I just, and I printed this one out, and Chuck, print this one out, again, on my new route, there's a, there's...
Not again at all.
But it's, it's related, it's ordinances. But I just, but there's another ordinance that, you know, that I talked to Nick about that, or not Nick, I'm sorry, it was Pete.
You haven't talked to me about either of these.
But when I, when I called you to get the, the snow...
You never called...
I sure did. Yeah, because Chuck was gone on vacation, and you had, you had mentioned to me, well, you know, it's a possibility that there's gonna be, it could blow, and I just, and then that's when, and I called you a few days later, and that's when you sent Mitch out. It was like...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
He never talked to me, except the only discussion I had with you was at the board level, when we had a, we had a board meeting, and I brought that up. That's the only...
I talked to you, I talked to you twice, I talked to Chuck before he went on vacation also. I'm just, I'm just curious what, you know, when, why those notices don't go out like sooner?
And I'll address, I mean, I can address the snow and ice removal.
Okay.
I, I don't recall a conversation with you. I heard about it through the grapevine after the fact.
You know, it's right there. I think you need to address the chair if anything, it shouldn't be a personal thing, it should address the chair.
It's not personal, I'm just...
No, no, we're just having a discussion.
And I've, I've been doing the snow and ice removal for 17 years. I've been doing that since I started here, I've been involved in it since I started here. We don't go out after every snowfall. That's, I mean, it takes about 14 hours of our time to do, we don't go out after every snowfall. From the story that I got, Mike, the, the specific sidewalk you were asking about, and I don't know who misunderstood it, I never heard, I was never informed of that. Mitch thought it was across the road from there, those houses across the road. That's what he told me, whether or not that was, that's what was portrayed. It sounded like that came from the front office. I don't know. Regardless, normally we go out maybe three to four times a year. This year was maybe a little lighter, we didn't have a lot of snow early on.
Right.
We do try to get out early in the year, because it takes care of a lot of repeat customers, because once they get the first notice of the year. I would, I would agree with you, this year was maybe a little bit later than normal. It was, wasn't, was it maybe three, four weeks ago? As far as the timing of that, I mean, I, I, there was, he, we had, he was sick, I explained this at a board meeting before, I mean, he was sick a day. Yeah, somebody else could go out, we didn't really have anybody available to do it, and then, you know, he got sent home another day sick when he was gonna do it, and then we had to wait till the following week, because there was a weekend in there, so it was a little longer than normal. But we try to, we try, when we go out, we try to make sure that it's a real problem before we go out the first time, because that way we get a lot of them out, and yes, we did 145 hangers that time. And like you mentioned, most of it melted off by the time we went to shovel, and there was, I think we only shoveled one. As far as the, the timing of it, yeah, there is a challenge in that sometimes, because it's 24 hours after it stops. If we go out and mark them, it takes us a day to a day and a half, depending on the severity of it. Took us a day and a half the last time. We have to give them the next day, so typically what we do is we make everybody the same day, even if it takes us a day and a half. Then we have to call a contractor, and sometimes it takes them a day to get here to shovel them, so if we see snow in the forecast in the next two or three days, we're kinda wasting our time, because if it snows in the meantime. So there is, there is some, some of that that goes into that. We have to look ahead and make sure that we're not going out, and it's gonna snow the next day, and then we gotta start the process all over.
Right, I understand that.
So, yes, I would say the 24 hours is cut and dry. I would agree with you there. Past practice and the notice, we've typically maybe waited a little bit longer than that, because usually, depending on when it stops snowing, we might wait that extra day, and others, sometimes we don't go out on any at all, if there's a small snow, and we don't see a lot of issues. And some of it has to do with how many complaints we get to. I mean, that has something to do with it.
I mean, do you prioritize like as far as like there, as I'm talking about, where the kids are like walking along the highway, you can't...
That's the problem. See here, and that's the other challenge, I think, we have with this, is if, we, we have two options. We can do it complaint-based, where if you call and complain, we'll go get that sidewalk. But if we're gonna go and pick a spot, and do, we're gonna do an area where the kids walk, we gotta do the whole village, because otherwise, everybody's calling and saying, well, why didn't my neighbors get it? Why didn't my in-laws get it over on so-and-so street? You know, so we have to do it uniformly or complain.
And this is the first time that I've ever had an issue with it since I've been out And this is the first time that I've ever had an issue with it since I've been out here, working out here. Typically I talk to Darren, um, just luck of the draw, he's the one in the office and it's been taken care of right away and this one just took a little bit longer, it was just, it was just real dangerous for the kids to be just walking along that area, so that's.
And I would agree, it was a, and I think it was just a chain of circumstances in this case and that, you know, like I said, I've been, I've been in charge of this for seventeen years, so. I don't, like, if this is the first time, I guess that's, that's a good thing, but, you know, I think it was just a, some circumstances that all came together and it was just kind of a bad timing.
Okay. All right.
Did this answer your question though, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't necessarily changing the ordinance, I just wanted, you know, I just want clarification if it's, if it's up to the person that you're talking to on the phone, if they're, you know, what their opinion is, I just, it's just cut and dry to me, like, you know, you put that, you hang them out after twenty-four hours. So that was the question. It was just a safety issue for me.
Did you want any of the other boards to weigh in on it though? I mean, you were kind of.
Um, I, I, I mean, I think Nick explained it pretty well, I just didn't know if, if there was, that's why I was asking to put it on there so you talked to Nick also, you know, and I wasn't sure if Darren was going to, um, but I understand Nick handles it, so, um, to chime in and, and offer his opinion, but. Now I know that, that it's not the opinion of how you're doing it, it's just, it was a safety issue. So that was a concern. And I, I mean, I did call down and I, I did talk to Nick, but I mean, you know, whatever. It just took a few days to get it out there and, and it was like the following week, so it just took a little while. It was about time that Chuck went on vacation.
Mike, well.
I just, I guess, did I hear you right when you said that when you plowed Prospect, it rose up on the sidewalk?
Well, it, we got that.
It's a small, I'm just, I never gave that a thought, but.
Yeah, and, and folks are usually pretty good.
I was going to say, that's a lot of snow removal, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I didn't ever give that a thought.
It was one of those words blew up on.
What?
And, and it was just really thick and hard to walk through and so I was just concerned with kids walking to school, you know, that's, that was the thing, you know, and they're so close to the highway, you know.
Never gave that a thought, so.
But, I mean, they're usually pretty good, you know, most of them along that way.
Well, you could say the same thing on Center Street. Or not Center Street, uh, Bishaw.
Yeah.
Bishaw.
But there's a lot.
But the, the traffic, the traffic's moving on there, you know.
Center Street for the sidewalks, so close to the road.
I guess, I would like to hear from the board, I guess, if what we're doing is okay because we are using some discretion on when we go out. I, I mean, if we, if you want us to go out after every single time it snows, you know, I, I think that's going to be a challenge with timing, with, with staffing. I think in the past we've done a pretty good job of just keeping it under wraps by going out when it gets pretty bad, going out and hitting a lot of people up with these notices and it kind of spreads the word and, and nobody, and they all realize they have to shovel from now on the rest of the year.
But didn't she say doesn't, doesn't notice say on it once?
Yeah, so, once they get their, yeah.
Once they get the notice, that's all they get, so I mean, if you.
That is all they get.
And it's just late in the year too, I mean, and people get to that point where they're like, ah, screw it, it's almost spring and I get that, but.
Yeah, so, once they get their first warning, then we don't have to warn them again, the next time it's not shoveled, we can go shovel it.
Because typically that, what I've seen over working out here in the last eight years is that it's typically the same people, it's not, you know, so that. So it's not necessarily the question, do you send them out every time, it's typically the same people, so they get that one notice and that's it, you know, so.
Right, but that's where the challenge comes in, is we can't pick on certain people unless we do get, we, we, if we go to straight complaint basis, then we can, but if, if we're going to go out and pick on people, we got to do everybody.
Keith? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I could, I could see Mike's concern as far as that, that sidewalk goes. But overall, in general, I've never really seen any major issues. I mean, you know, usually it's taken care of.
It's pretty good out here actually, better than Fond du Lac.
Yeah, one, right. One suggestion that I, I guess I would, would make is, you know, I, I, after every snow as a board member, I don't, I know the staff is tight, I mean, you guys are all, you know, working with a, a shorter staff, you know, so I wouldn't expect you to go out after every single snow to, you know, succumb the village to see if every sidewalk was cleaned. But maybe just an idea, you know, when, uh, when some of your workers are out, they're driving around, if they would happen to see something that looks bad, you know, maybe they could, you know, let somebody know or, you know, just in their regular duties. You know, the water guys and, you know, whatever that are cruising around, if they happen to see some sidewalks, hey, that hasn't been shoveled for a few days or, you know, whatever, and let Nick know, you know, that, that would be good because they're out there anyway, you know, and if they, they happen to see something, you know, if you could just put a bug in their ear about it, you know, hey guys, if you see something like that, you know, let me know and I can get, let Nick know, you know, it's just a little extra coverage.
I think a lot of it depends on how much snow we get.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, we're not going to go outside of our, the end should.
No, no, right.
Just going to go around and.
Tonight we might get what, four or five or something, so, I mean.
Like tonight, maybe?
Mike's got something.
I guess. Um, you mentioned something about complaint, let's see if you get a complaint. Do you, do you address those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that's, that's all the city does now.
So when, when Mr. Struder called the village here, so did, is that considered a complaint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That got addressed?
It, we, it did, but it took longer than it should have.
It just took a few days.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But there was some confusion there.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody have anything? Not move on, item four, discussion of twenty eighteen water utility budget. Nick?
Nick and Darren, yeah, one of the budgets. Everybody's got a copy of them and I don't, you know, in the past we've never really gone through these line by line. I can highlight some, some points if you want and then we can just go through one, one at a time and if you have any questions, if that's all right with everyone. Um, starting with the water, then the six oh two accounts, the first section that I spend a lot of my time on is the operating revenue section. And this might look a little different than it has in the past, it's, because it says current actual instead of estimated actual because it's after the first, so we actually have actuals in there now. There's not really a lot to talk about in the revenues in my opinion, there's, there's some numbers that move around a little bit here and there, but, you know, for the most part, if you look back at twenty sixteen, it was eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand total. Twenty seventeen was eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Um, we're budgeting eight ninety-two for next year. There's, the only things that change a little bit are some, the residential and the commercial, there's going to be a, a little bit of a change next year because some of our commercial customers were, are their revenues going to the commercial, they're actually res- residential customers, their, their rates that they had in the apartments were, we're not going to the correct revenue account, so we're going to fix that, which is why that four thirty-five for residential charges, I'm going up a little bit. Which the commercial charges will drop a little bit from the ninety-five, so that's why I'm putting that back down to the ninety. Moving down into late charges, I mean, those things are kind of a guessing game. Miscellaneous service revenue, they're, they're all kind of a guessing game, the water tower lease revenue is not a guessing game, that, that's about thirty-six thousand annually, that's for the cell towers, at least our water tower. Debt service, straightforward, those numbers are known ahead of time. Slight drop-off there, very small drop-off and I actually printed those, I'm trying to remember if the water. So the water, then next year it jumps up to two forty-seven for debt service and then back down to two oh one after that, so that debt service starts to drop off quite significantly into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and, and then again in twenty twenty-two, it drops to a hundred and twelve, so. There's some room there, we, we do have projects that are coming up that, um, that we can maybe borrow a little bit more in the future if need be. Charge in lieu of taxes, that's just a payment we pay to the general fund for taxes because we don't, we're tax exempt. And then moving on to more of Darren's stuff with the operations, source of supply. That one's.
Pretty much, pretty much straightforward is what has been in the past, um, slight increases in some of the operating labors. Typically we don't spend out all of our overtime, but we still have to budget for main break overtime and pump failures of overtime and stuff. We still have the on-call people coming in on weekends. Chemicals, that's always a hit and miss on the price of what chemicals do. Maintenance to the wells and tower and stuff, that just more than fixing what's broken and stuff, it's like stuff is wearing out. We did have a check valve fail that we had to replace here. So it's going to be testing some of the other check valves now and some of the things that we have to do in the maintenance of the wells is testing the meters annually. So that's all in here. I guess, any questions? One of the larger numbers in our, in this budget is the meters and that's replacing water meters every year.
The, uh, one thing I was going to talk about in, in the last section on this page under maintenance expense, under maintenance to mains. You'll notice in two thousand and sixteen, we spent fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, I think prior to that it was in that forty mark. So we had budgeted forty-eight thousand for this year and we only spent twelve, that's a good thing. We had hardly any mains breaks the whole year, but we're not comfortable that that's going to continue, so. Um, we're, we're still at that forty-four thousand dollars, but that, you'll see there's a huge, huge cost savings there in this section.
And we did take a little bit out of that, but I'm still not comfortable going down to that twelve thousand dollar mark because we could have a year that we have thirty breaks again. Even though a lot of our projects are replacing older water mains, we still have quite a few in the system. I guess, any questions on a certain line item you'd like explained?
Quick question on the outside services, that's for that, is that for that service company that we have?
No, outside services covers, um.
Uh, you two jumping it. Okay, you're on page three now?
No, I'm on the water.
On nine, two, three.
Yeah, you're on the, you're in the detail, yep.
Nine, two, three, zero, one.
I'm sorry, yeah. Am I, am I ahead of myself here?
Uh, a little bit, we're just working on page two there, but that's fine.
Well, part of that is the audit, um, part of the engineering for the water system are the two larger numbers in there.
Were you asking specifically?
I guess my question is, where's that, where's that charge that we pay for this type of agreement that like that ten-year lease we had with?
Oh, the wells, the well agreements.
Yeah, source of supply.
Yeah, it's in source of supply.
Yeah, that's in source of supply on page three of the detail.
Three of the detail. You see on, right in the middle of the page, I got page three of the detail.
This is stormwater, I'm in row one here. I'm in row one over here, okay. All right, I'm on three. I'm on the wastewater, I'm on the, I'm on here.
Here's six oh two. But you probably got flipped there. Right here.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, source, source of supply is maintenance to the wells themselves.
Yep. Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, we'll jump back to page three of the summary pages, uh, so.
Uh, just quick question, Darren, where are, like, where are the old water mains located? I mean, like, what would constitute like an old water main? How old are they? Do they have to be to be like considered a problem?
I wish I had my PSC pages, but we have quite a few mains that were put in in the thirties and forties yet.
Where, now where are those about? Like, I mean, because there weren't a lot of those done like in Indiana.
Those were older, older yet.
Did a lot of those get replaced? So, I mean, those are done, right?
Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, Michigan. Some of the sections in Michigan are from the nineties. I know, like Beshaw is one of the older sections.
That section by the school.
Really?
That's north of the school.
North.
Oh, like Schneider's house is up that way, that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and Adams, and, okay.
And then you get into like, uh, part of Marco, part of Center, part of Clinton, up on North Street and St. Paul, up by me, those mains are from back in the forties.
Minnesota.
Really?
Yeah, Minnesota is ruled.
Because the, the street was, Minnesota, the street was done, but then.
The street was done in seventy, the street was done in seventy-three, but the main.
Parts of the infrastructure.
The main was never replaced underneath it.
Okay, so there's still quite a bit.
We had, we had such an issue with the main across from Bessie Allen back in the nineties that we replaced that block.
Okay. So, well, there was quite a bit. All right, thank you.
So back to, like, we'll go back to page three on the water, on the summary pages, so it starts out customer accounts and expense, not really much to talk about there. Administrative in general, um, those are salaries, overtime for the administrative side of things, office supplies, that's where all the outside services, that's, that outside services account, that's the one Mike was just asking about earlier. That's, that's got a lot of the, um, audit and it's, if you look at the detail, there's quite a bit of stuff in that account itself. Miscellaneous engineering, accounting support, kind of where our IT stuff goes, um, that's a big, big expense account.
Part of that is our chemical testing that the state lab does, or we deal with, uh, northern labs for testing for certain things.
Property, property insurance, health and dental, retirement, that, obviously that stuff we can't really control too much on. Miscellaneous expense, travel expenses, main replacement, we're not planning on doing any main replacement this year as of right now. We don't have anything planned. That doesn't, that's not to say that something doesn't pop up, but, um, and we have some equipment there. Well, there's some shoring possibly.
Adding to our shoring, um, we're going to purchase a new portable generator this year. That generator split between water and wastewater because we use the pumps for doing both. Pressure relief valves, those are going to be probably put on fire engines that they use when they're training and when they can put them out for a fire. Booster pump valving, that's going to be happening in well four, we have some check valves that need to be replaced.
So all in all, at the bottom, we're looking at a deficit of about eighty-six hundred dollars, um, as budgeted. One thing we, uh, with the utilities compared to like the general fund budgeting, there's really not many choices we have in utilities. We have to provide service, we have to treat our water, so we do our best to put our budgets together, there always, obviously everybody, it's a little bit of a guessing game. It's a little unusual in ours, for us, because our guys work in different, all the departments, so they may spend more time in the general fund or more time in the streets versus our wastewater versus the water, so it's a little bit harder to nail down the, the hours worked for the, for the public works guys, so. I, I'm very comfortable with this number and what we always end up doing is having to wait till we get our audit back, which will be hopefully in the next probably month to find out how last year went and we're approved by the PSC to have a six percent, to make six percent profit. That's what, you know, the utilities make profit. We're approved to have a six percent profit, once we see where that number is, then we always look at, is it time to look at a rate raise or not? At this point, I don't, I don't suspect we'll see a rate raise. We did take out a new borrow for the water for Indiana Avenue. We did that as part of the GO borrow, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's already rolled into that debt service plan I was talking about, so even with that added in there, we're still reducing our debt service annually. The, the, in, on Indiana Avenue, that's the only part of it we borrowed for, for utilities. Wastewater and stormwater paid for with cash, they're parts of Indiana Avenue. So that would be the water budget, if anybody has any questions.
How is that rolled in there? I mean, is that, is it all because we didn't charge them for the project? I mean, I'm looking for Indiana Avenue, how is that?
So it's, it's on, if you look at the debt service on page one, the first line, two line items are two thousand and seventeen GO principal and two thousand and seventeen GO interest.
Yep.
That's the addition. So this year there's only, there's only an interest payment the first year. Then next year, I've got the debt service scheduled here if you want to see it, but.
I'm okay, I just.
Yeah, so that's where it is, so there was a, I think there was a two thousand and five actually there that dropped off, so I just replaced it with the two thousand and seventeen.
So are we taking it separate or are we?
Yes.
They should be done separate.
Yes.
Okay. We were fine discussing the wastewater utility budget for.
That's finished, we need a motion, yeah. Motion. Wait, I'm sorry.
We, we were just discussing, we were going to wait.
There's no possible action, you're waiting for the audit come in?
Well, no, we always, we don't want to throw this all at G and H, you hold on at the same ninety-six questions or something, gives us two weeks to answer any questions, so.
We'll put it on.
They're big budgets, so we don't want to just do it all in one night. So it's just for discussion today.
Okay, let's move on to the wastewater killing budget for twenty eighteen.
Again, I spend a lot of my time with the revenue starting out. I'm usually pretty conservative when it comes to the revenues and it's always good to see that our revenues are a little bit higher than what I, what I had budgeted. So right now we're about thirty-two thousand dollars above what we had budgeted for revenues in the, for two thousand and seventeen. Late charges and that stuff, it's very small amounts, again, kind of a guessing game, especially with late charges. So total proposed revenue for next year is, or this year I should say, one point four eight four million. That's slightly below our actual from last year, but above where we had budgeted for twenty seventeen by about thirty thousand dollars. Again, debt service after that, um, in this case in debt service, we go from two sixty-five to two twenty-six, it's quite a significant drop. And then after that, it actually drops even more to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in twenty nineteen. So again, very healthy with our debt service payments, we're going to drop a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of debt service out next year out of this budget, which, as I talked about in my weekly report, about the DM onification process at the plant, it's very good timing because we're, we're, we're going to have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars left, so to speak, in this budget that we should be able to use for those payments. So it's actually great timing, wasn't planned, but great timing. Moving on, it's three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is just for the payment for the treatment plan from two thousand. That, that service continues to twenty twenty-five for the plant, I know it's questioned a lot of times, it's how long that's going on. Twenty twenty-five is the last payment for that. Then it's moving on to again, operating labor, but one before we get into the operations, which is mostly Darren's stuff, that, you'll see that four hundred thousand dollar line item there, the city of Fond du Lac treatment expense. That's what we pay to the city for the treatment and I, if you recall, I think last year I even said it that we budget four hundred every year. And in, I think in four years we hadn't used four hundred, but I said, I, I know at some point we will use four hundred, well, last year was it, we used five hundred and forty thousand, so. That's a number that we, again, it's a guessing game, we have an educated guess, but if we have a really wet year, that number can just, sometimes it could double if it's a really. sometimes it could double if it's a really, really wet year, we've seen that in the past, so, really uncontrolled, we can't control what, how much that costs. All we can do is try and fix our system and hope that we can keep out some of that influence infiltration. So, we're budgeting four hundred again, hoping that we don't have another five hundred or five hundred and forty for next year. The rest of it's, you know, pretty mundane and maintenance.
Maintenance expenses, that covers annual flushing, um, part of the meters, come, part of the meter wages come out of wastewater, but the purchase of the meters themselves is all water. That's something we used to do differently and the auditors had us change that up about three years ago. Building and grounds is maintenance and repair around the wastewater facilities, um, whether it be the lift station, pumping station with the bypass tank, it's just maintenance repair to those facilities. The customer accounting and collections, that's, uh, post, it's self-explanatory, but it's, uh, postage supplies for part of the water bills that go out, because the utility, the wastewater bill is part of the water bill. Meter reading wages. Then you get into the admin and general expenses. We do have a line item in there, contingency. Part of that is, that's where we're gonna pay for the cleaning of the, no, we did.
For the school.
Yeah, um, we had an issue with a school sewer that we covered part of, or the cost on, it was a collapsed part of them lateral in the street. So, that's why that number is higher, contractor had to come in and dig up, uh, Polk Street by Friendship School, and it was something that.
Yeah, we discussed it actually at a meeting, you were at.
Okay, so you're aware of that.
Actually, Ann wasn't at that meeting. Were you, oh, was that the meeting you were at, okay.
Okay.
So, that they're all probably aware of what it was.
Is that, is that the collection one you're talking about?
That is out of contingency.
Contingency, well, okay, how about the collection thing, how come there was such a spike in two thousand seventeen?
Which page?
Oh, same page on top, it's, uh.
I think that's where you charged that there, that collection system. Maintenance expense, I think that's where it was charged.
You budgeted like nine or ten.
No, that's an eighteen expense.
This is an eighteen expense we're talking about, that, the school is going to be an eighteen expense.
Okay, but the seventeen, I was just kinda curious why there was such a spike.
Yeah.
In collection system.
Yes. And I was just.
Do you know Darren, off the top of your head?
You can get back to me.
If you like, we talked about it, we do, I just can't think of it right now.
Through one oh one, zero.
There's nothing. Crewman for collection, cost of cleaning sanitary sewer jet.
I'm gonna have to look into that one.
I know we talked about it.
I know, and I forgot what, what it was. That's why we're good, we're not voting on them tonight, gives me a little time to look at what I wrote down in my other notes for that one.
So, the red, that administrative in general, a lot of salaries and stuff and, and insurance, all that other stuff, sanitary district negotiations, that's our OSG costs for attorney fees and that for our OSG. And then insurance, retirement FICA. Is there any questions about any of that? Again, payment lieu taxes is in here, and then going on to the bottom, I mentioned this earlier, but we spent a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars last year on Indiana Avenue, and we did not borrow for that, which is a great thing not having to do, we had enough cash on hand. We also had enough cash on hand in the water, it was just getting to the point in the water department where we didn't feel comfortable going below where we were at. But in the, in the wastewater department, we had enough, we felt comfortable taking that out of there. And you'll notice that this budget is actually a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in the black. But that's, that is planned a little bit, we've got this phosphorus thing hanging over our head and the TMDL for the Lake Winnebago. Once that comes down the pipe and the city has to do treatment, they're doing the multi-discharge variance, there's gonna be fines associated from the DNR. There's going to be an increase in expenses in the future, so it's a great thing to have this budget at least set up for absorbing some of that. So, that's a good thing to see. Along with our debt service dropping off again, so, you know, if you look at this, if everything's, if all things are equal next year, you're looking at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so of excess at revenue. Any questions on the wastewater budget? They get easier, storm water is extremely easy.
To come back to Mike's question, I just realized what it is, that is wages that we spent in wastewater. And our wages are spread out, um, through all the utilities and GO budget, so the crew guys are hourly, so their time gets put out to all these other accounts, so if this one's over, that means another one was under. And it could've been in the GO budget, streets, parks, facilities there.
Still, there's a reason that it's elevated.
Look at what we actually spent the hours in.
Then we're on storm water, um, storm water is the easiest budget for us to put together, because it's, nothing changes with the revenues, it's based on ERUs, they're called, earned runoff units, it's based on how many square feet of impervious surface you have, and that's what you're charged on now. In the village, a residential unit is all charged the same, so that's fifty-six dollars annually, that's what a homeowner pays, a normal owner. A duplex is charged slightly different, commercial properties are measured, um, based off of aerials and charge, based on that, it's like three hundred, three thousand three hundred and twenty-three square feet of impervious surface is one ERU, so that costs you fifty-six dollars a year. So, long and short of it is, is the revenues are extremely easy to budget, as you can see, they're pretty much the same every year. Again, this is another one of those budgets that is waiting for this TMDL for storm water and phosphorus, I can guarantee we're gonna have some pretty big expenses to take care of our storm water in the future. When that is, we thought it was gonna be much sooner than, than now, it just hasn't happened yet. We still obviously have some expenses that we're, you know, we do a lot with our storm water, but we do have a very healthy fund here, we have quite a bit of money in, in reserves and our, our expenses never really come very close to using up our revenues, but once we have, we don't, remember this is a pretty young utility, it was created in two thousand and seven, and to this day, we haven't had to take out any borrow, so we don't have any debt service in this utility, and I expect in the future, we will have debt service payment, so, once that starts getting put into here, I think this budget is gonna be right where it needs to be. That was more of an overview, I guess, of the entire budget, there's really, storm water, street sweeping, I know is asked, we made seventy-seven hundred dollars on that last year in revenues. We're budgeting for three thousand next year.
I guess that, that's my question, if, is, you know, we budgeted five hundred, did we do a lot more than we, we have seventy-seven hundred, did we put a lot of other, like Ripon and Lamaro, a lot this last year?
Yeah, we went to Lamaro, we went to Campbell'sport, um, we went to Fairwater.
I think we messed up that budget number, if that's the question, that five hundred last year.
Five hundred, it was budgeted.
I think something didn't get entered incorrectly, it shouldn't have been five hundred.
We didn't do as much outsourcing last year as we did in, or in sixteen as we did in seventeen.
And we drive that thing way over to Fairwater? I mean, I know we're.
It's a, it's a truck chassis.
I don't, but it's, uh.
It travels at highway speeds.
I think we're a capital, a year or two away from replacing that thing, right?
Nineteen.
How was, how was it, uh, what kinda condition is it in right now?
It's showing that it's gonna be twenty years old.
We bought it used, correct?
We bought it brand new.
We bought it brand new, is that twenty twenty?
Nineteen.
You'll also notice that the street sweeping expense right below that is elevated, so that, that's seven, seventy-seven hundred dollars is a net profit. There is, you know, expenses associated with it, obviously, so. Uh, so we got a lot of the same, but a much smaller version of, of the other two budgets. Counting and collecting, salaries, office expense, diggers hotline insurance, those types of things. Just, they're pretty easy to budget.
This is, this, this is the budget we budgeted like ten grand for laterals and stuff, or?
Yes, it's a twenty thousand dollar line item.
Did we raise it twenty now?
Reserve program repairs, it's the last, second to last item, so ten thousand of that twenty thousand is basically set aside for laterals, and we did them very cheap this year, I was asking Darren, I said, you put in four laterals and you only spent a thousand dollars. So.
Our labor is in a different part of this.
The labor isn't getting charged there, so that's.
Doesn't get charged, that's materials budget. Labor is in a different part.
It's budgeted here, we, we just talked about trying to change that, we're gonna talk to Chris to see if we can actually charge. Either we gotta charge their labor against his account or put their, the, the expense in a different account for their labor. Any questions? We'll bring it back for approval at the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks Nick and Nick, or Nick and Darren. Number seven, discussion of the next steps on selecting new village administrator.
Thought we'd discuss, you know, moving forward with this, this process and, uh, based on, on the last, um, process of narrowing it down to three, these are some of the items that I thought we needed to at least come to some consensus on and continue to, to move forward with it, again, it's just a starting point, it's not saying it's all of everything, or we have more than we need here, but it's kinda just discuss it, so, uh, the thought was on the twenty-third of, of March, on the Friday, and I talked to Steve Hens today a little bit, and he had kinda recapped what he was talking about as well, so, uh, on the twenty-third, we had talked at one time about having the, the candidates meet with staff for just a little while, just to kinda get their impression of the candidates, and then, and I don't think I had it on here, because I, I guess I wasn't aware of it, but maybe then later in the afternoon, say around five o'clock, to also another kind of a meet and greet with some of the village, like the Aaron Sadoff maybe, or the school board president, some other people within the village to also meet, uh, the candidates as well. I, I didn't have that in the list, cause I, when I put the board, the agenda together, I, I wasn't aware that that was another thing that we're thinking of doing, so I mean, it's definitely something can be, it's just. But then, you know, just some, just general question that I need to know, which kinda help coordinate those activities, so, um, first of all, maybe we should take one of these things at a time, is that still something you would hope to do, is to have the candidates meet with staff a little bit, just to show them the, the area a little bit and, you know, make, I'm not saying this has to be an all-day event, maybe just ten, fifteen minutes with each staff member and go from there?
I guess I would, Wayne, I, I, I think it's important, I don't know if we need to go to every staff member, but at, at the very least, the department heads.
That's what I'm really, I guess.
Present, that's great, but I would, I would hope that we would allow time to talk to, to department heads and I would, I would see no problem, hopefully in the morning, you know? This is my two cents on that topic.
Any objection to doing that?
No.
No. No objection, I will, um, one of the things that Steve mentioned, and I'll stay on that topic of, of meeting with the department heads, is that after that is accomplished, then sometime in that afternoon, Steve wanted to meet with the department heads, just to have them convey their impressions of the candidates. He would take notes on that, and he said that he would convey that back to the village board after the interviews that the board had with the candidates. So, it's kind of a process of that Saturday that the interviews would handle, so if we're gonna go ahead with that, then the other thing is that kind of a meet and greet at around five o'clock on that Friday afternoon, is that something you wanted to do as well? Again, probably meet with like the, I mean, school superintendent, uh.
Yeah, and with the board members, or?
Well, um, yeah, I don't see why not, sure.
That's what I thought we originally discussed when we talked to Steve Hens, was, uh, them to talk to the staff during the day or whatever, and then have a meet and greet with us and whoever we thought would be somewhat important, um, that they should know in the afternoon. That's what I got out of it, anyway.
Nick?
Which one?
Both got your flag up, who went up first?
I went up first, I think, but, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with it, but I was just thinking, you know, we did, Steve did talk about it, but what's, what about having a luncheon and inviting like Aaron Sadoff and the school board president, and we could do it then at the same time and.
Are you saying a luncheon like Friday afternoon?
Right, so I mean, we can shorten that period up a little bit, so.
Sure.
I'm just, two cents, I'm, I'm open for suggestions, but, um, whoever we think that might wanna be for the community invited, I would just sort it out there, so.
What, what I don't know about that, Mike, is how many of these people are actually working, you know, that they wouldn't be able to get off.
And we can just sort it out there, they can't make it.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Aaron Sadoff, I would, you know.
Aaron, I think could, but, uh, you know, I thought another one would be the school president, I'm not sure who that is right now.
Peachism.
Pete, you know, um.
I say throw it out there, see if they can make it.
Okay.
Or somebody in his place, you know, could go.
Would that restrict some of the board members for possibly coming? Possibly.
I could, I could arrange my schedule.
What, what time, well?
If you're saying a luncheon, it'd be around twelve.
I, I can't remember what we did. Like the administrator before Chuck, I, I remember something at the community center and inviting the community out to meet the candidates, I, I, but I don't remember how that went, that was a while ago. I don't know.
I mean, we can do it right after at five, you know, I mean, so it's not drag out into the evening and just have a, promote hors d'oeuvres and stuff like that, too.
I think that would be better, I think our people would be able to come to that, I don't like work during the day.
It's kinda like when a congressman has a, you know, afternoon thing when everybody's working, you know, it, it limits everybody.
Unless anybody's any objections, why don't we do that at the five o'clock?
Yeah.
That'd work.
Is the general village population gonna see who the pre-candidates are?
It's public knowledge.
It's public knowledge.
Are you suggesting like having someone at the community center, like, just like come out and?
No, I haven't seen any names or anything, is there something out or not?
Uh, I know it's been on KFIC and things like that, they've announced it. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Nobody, why we can't announce it?
Oh, no, it's public knowledge, yes, absolutely.
Was that in the paper, or, or don't, I mean?
Well, like I said, I think it was.
Yeah.
I don't remember. Get it, so I don't. I don't know if it was in there.
It's Nick Leonard, John Duffy, and David Detroit, David Troy lives over in Keel. There were seven candidate, there were forty-seven applications, those forty-seven were narrowed down to seven based on this firm that were helping us, it's called PAA, Professional Administrators Associates. They helped take all of these forty-seven, look at their backgrounds and everything else, and they came down to seven, those seven then were created candidate profiles that they presented to the board, and the board then narrowed those seven down to three.
Well, I heard that, I would put my one hundred percent backing behind that. I've known you quite a while, you've been here a long time, you're dedicated. I think you'd be a great asset, and a great asset, so I just want to all the people who work with us to know that.
Oh, thank you.
Prime at.
Sure.
I've been here a long time. And, uh, I, whatever the devil I do.
Thank you. But, you know, I, I think we've kinda got that twenty-third covered as to how that's gonna work there. Again, I think that it falls kinda back on Steve to kinda gather the information that he's gonna convey back to the board.
Would that five o'clock be here then, or would it be?
I think so, I don't think it needs to be, I don't think we're gonna have a standing room or maybe.
No, I just didn't know a few logistic reasons.
I would think there's only one candidate that needs to tour.
Well, that's another thing, I'll work that out, I'll work that out with the candidates, if they really feel they need one or not. I've got a little bit of question about, um, the interview process on the twenty-fourth.
Can I just back up?
Sorry.
The briefing to the board, when is that gonna happen, that's gonna happen Saturday morning?
Actually, he said he'd do that briefing after you, after the board interviews the candidates.
Oh, after, okay.
Whenever that might be. And the reason I say whenever that might be is, um, when I've been involved with a number of interview process, there's an interview panel, first of all, that's made up of, of peers. And maybe some other administrators or other people that, uh, probably know the job and have worked the job for some time, just to let them weigh in and be able to answer and understand the responses to questions, and as, a little side note on that, Steve is gonna be providing some, a draft of questions for the interview panel as well, just based on his long history of going through that process.
Who's on that panel?
Well, that's gonna be my question. Well, that's gonna be my question, you know, I, I've been hearing different stories, is this interview panel just the board, or is there that two-tiered panel interview, first panel being other administrators and other people that again, people in, maybe in the community, maybe again, it's an Aaron or somebody like that, but not the village board at that level, at that point, it's not like we're gonna eliminate anybody that's getting their perception and some grading system and everything else, any notes they might take. And that's gonna happen on the twenty-fourth, whoever this panel is, if it's the board, or if it's a makeup of other people in the, around us, so. What are your feelings on that? I mean, is that something you had thought was gonna happen?
I was hoping that would have, were you part of that for Aaron? For the, when we did the panels, were you part of that? I know, I can't remember. Because they had community members and, and we all had, you know, we all had questions that we asked, and then you just, and then everybody got together and we talked about all the candidates, and then we recommended to the school board who we thought would be the best.
Right, and I guess is that the same?
That's what I was hoping would happen.
Okay, and I, I, I was thinking that's, by personal opinion, I think it's the right thing to do, I just didn't know if that's what you were expecting or not. So, if that is the case, then I will work on some recommendations back to the board as to who maybe could be on this panel for the twenty-fourth.
So, is that what the board was thinking? I mean, were you guys thinking then?
Yeah.
Jim? Or, or no?
I'm open. I'm open.
Yeah, I think just a panel of five is adequate, just trying to find the right people for that, and I'll, I'll bring back some names as to, and I'll, I'll maybe reach out and just see if they would be interested, not saying they'll be approved or not, so. But if that's set on the twenty-fourth, we've got the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, then it's a matter of after that, when would the board like to talk to these candidates? Is that following?
I thought we, weren't we gonna make that decision on the twenty-fourth, or no?
I thought the board was gonna interview, I'd interview him on the twenty-fourth.
Well, I mean.
That's what Steve had.
Right.
Right, but now if we're talking about this other peer group doing it, they would do a.
Could they do that on Friday, or no?
Or couldn't we both do it on Saturday, like they did it first, and we did it second, and we maybe came together afterwards?
I like that idea.
We could see that.
Just do it all, wrap it up on Saturday?
Yep.
While they're, yeah.
They're here, well, I mean, a couple of them are local, pretty much, but I mean, the gentlemen from Keel.
It, it just wasn't clear, I'd, I'd.
I didn't, that, that.
I wasn't clear on it either.
Yeah, the panelists, I just, I was assuming that the panelists, you know, the interview would be on Friday, and then we would get all that information on Saturday, that way you don't have to rush the process, you know, and we can, we'd have enough time to make that decision on Saturday.
Well, I don't think we'd have to rush the process on Saturday, you start them in the morning, it's gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be like a huge long time for each one, forty, forty-five minutes, whatever. And then meet with them in the afternoon, give them an hour break or whatever, and and do it.
We have to meet in between there with that first group.
Right.
Another thing, we can't do it, I'm just saying, it's gonna have to be time for that, too.
Yeah.
So first they would meet with the peer group, and then they would meet with us?
On the twenty-fourth, though?
And then, yes, and then after we would all talk about it?
I think so, I mean, that's kinda what I'm seeing happening here.
Is that the way you see it? I'm just trying to figure what the timeline would be, just, you know, how that day would go, just know, I just wanna make sure we have enough time to do it, so it isn't too long in the day, you know?
Could one of us be interviewing, like, we could kind of, we would be interviewing one in the peer group, we could be interviewing the other, so that we're, we're all here and doing it, I just, I wouldn't want us, them to interview, and then we interview, and they have to kinda sit around and wait, too.
That's a great idea.
I'd like to know what we're gonna gain with this peer group.
I think that a peer group has a good perspective of what's important for that position.
A peer here from the community, so they know, you know, they, they can tell us what, how they feel about what they're getting, or who they're getting.
I mean, would it be other administrators that we would have?
I'd try to.
I think I'd want somebody on the peer group that knows what an administrator does, though, I don't want popular, or I don't want, I want somebody that knows what the job is.
That's what Chuck said, we're gonna try to get some other.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, when, when I hear the word peer, you know, or, or just anybody, I mean, you know, I want somebody that's done the job.
I would search those out, yes.
And we talked about some of our live communities that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, let me work on that, and I'll keep you updated on it.
I just, I'm just, I'm a little confused, so that group is gonna meet, and that group meets, we don't talk to them before we, when we do the board, both groups meet.
Independent.
And then after, after you have
Yeah.
the general group, but then probably we.
At some point.
At the end of the day, the board will make the decision.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I think I've got enough to at least get going with this, one of the other things that I did send out with the letters to the three finalists is that to release of a background check, so I mean, I've got those documents to, what I don't know, too, is, is this something that we wanna do it on O three, or wait till we know who the final person is? Is there a cost to that, Darren, for a background check?
I thought Steve did that.
He just checked on the references, he really didn't do.
He did talk about background checks, so.
To what extent can, I mean, we've got release forms, what would you recommend for something like this, Darren?
I would, I would recommend to do a full roll background.
Okay.
You don't wanna wind up in a situation if you didn't pass a department head.
Well, just something like that, it's, it's not that costly anyway, and I think it's important enough that it doesn't, shouldn't be a prohibitive.
I would ask Steve, don't, he's got experience, I mean, I'm, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but just, you know.
Oh, I would, yeah, I can ask him, I would.
Just make sure it's.
I think he'd write, I'd recommend it, too.
I think it's good, but I just make sure that we're not doing something that.
All right, I'll initiate that as well. One of the things, too, I've got a note on the bottom of this, too, is, you know, the four trustees that were on the board at the time had Steve's presentation of the candidate profiles, and I recommended that Ann hear that as well. So she gets to at least the same level of what, what the rest of you heard, so I've, I've asked Steve to reach out to Ann, and she's probably got a dilemma back when she gets home that's trying to set something like that up, too. I think it's only fair to bring her up to the same level of understanding, so. I think that's all I really had so far on this, so if there's any other questions, this is kinda what I will work towards.
Starting with you, did you wanna talk about that or not?
Well, I, I didn't know, you know, my, my official date that I've been working towards, I think, is July sixth. That was probably my last day, so.
I think Steve recommended a couple weeks overlap.
Yep.
Hopefully we can.
Sure.
We may not be able to come up with a week to that.
Sure.
I think, I think we'd know more after the twenty-fourth, as to who gets the position, if it's, if it's somebody local or something, they're not gonna need as big of
Yes.
overlap as someone else.
Okay. But I didn't have anything else.
You did?
Question filling the trustee vacancy following the spring election on April third.
As we know with Mike and Keith running for village president, when one of them wins that election process, there will be a vacancy for the trustee. And we'll be going through the same thing again as to filling that vacancy. As I had mentioned in the cover letter, that last time we had actually sent out a flyer in the utility bills, just letting everybody who gets a utility bill that there is this vacancy, and that just isn't gonna work this time because that letter won't go out till the end of April, and I'm not sure you wanna wait that long to fill that vacancy, so. We'll have to think about how we wanna do the search, you know, we can. I, I'm not sure of all the methods that we actually use, I think we did a little Facebook and some of those things, but.
Put it on this website, right?
Yes, yeah.
Do, do you think we'll get more interest in that?
I suspect not, but I think we have to go through the process, at least to some, some level of effort, yeah.
I mean, do we have? I mean, do we have a good pool, or no, what, what is our opinion?
Oh, we have one.
You know?
Well, we've got.
We've got.
Four candidates left?
Actually, we have, actually, we have five, because.
Five, oh, one dropped out.
Because you couldn't make it.
But I, I, I sent a letter to all five of those that didn't make it, that this is gonna be happening, and I encourage them to apply again, so I, we'll have to see who.
He might make this one.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you, you know, I think we can just get it out there, it won't be quite as elaborate as the last time, and rely on hopefully these same candidates applying again, if that's fine.
Need to interview again, I mean, is that the same candidates, or just the one that missed? I mean, what, I mean, we can do, we can do anything we want, you know, I mean.
Well, I think, I think to, to get the word out to the, the candidates, you know, obviously they know there's gonna be an opening if they're still interested. I agree with you, I don't necessarily think we have to go through the whole interview with, with the same candidates again. We, we know all of the candidates, we could, maybe for Ann, though, maybe Ann didn't see all the.
New ones.
The only problem is Ann didn't get to see all the interviews, or she's not familiar, so she might wanna hear, you know, she might wanna hear something from, it would be kinda unfair to her. So, with that being said, I guess we would have to go through, my opinion, I guess we would have to go through an interview process again.
Does anybody have any idea what timeline, when, when do we want this person, I mean, you know, we can pick them at any time, because obviously we know one of us is gonna move up.
Right.
So. I mean.
Well, we could always call a special board meeting after the second, third, it's Tuesday, right?
Election day. Sixteenth, but I mean, if you guys wanna do any kind of interviews the weekend before, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, somewhere.
Or we could, i- is there anything that says we can't pick someone prior, because one of us is gonna win? I mean, unless we're really bad, I mean, I don't think, we're not gonna win. One of us is gonna get more, one more vote than the other. So we know we're gonna have that vacancy, is this something that we could do ahead of time? And that person fill the position?
So we can just start rolling?
Right.
Did we decide, I mean, did we talk about before, I mean, we can, the board can decide any way that we want to finish, to fill that position.
Right.
You know?
There's no statute to.
Yeah, it's, it's really up to us. How we wanna do it.
Am I, am I playing, I, I think we, we have to wait till the election's over with, I know it's.
It's the formal, formal process.
Formal process, because I mean, somebody could be written in, if, you know?
It really isn't.
Chance is slim and none, I get it.
There isn't really a vacancy until, actually, the vacancy doesn't occur till the seventeenth, because that's when this new person starts.
I, I, I don't see why, I don't think there's enough time to put that in the villager at the end of the month, I mean, we still.
It's up to you.
You know, but again, I, I do like the list we had before, but we need to open it up to anybody else that may wanna throw the hat in the ring, but again, I agree, we have to re-interview everybody, give them a fair chance, so.
Jim's last official meeting is the sixteenth of April.
Okay, so then, right, so that's, that's when the vacancy.
So we will have time.
That's when the election's over, I think we can.
We will have time.
Yeah.
So how do we wanna advertise, do we wanna wait till the water bill again, and do it that way? When is water bill?
Water bill's in.
Probably like the.
May?
Well, the last week of April. First part, May, is it right in December?
You know?
No, it's gonna be May, no.
End of May?
End of May.
No, I, I asked Teresa that for sure, and she said end of April.
We just paid it the other February.
That's what it says on here, it says, it goes out, but you have a month to pay for it.
Because March is the end of the quarter, so the.
Oh, the end of, for first quarter, yeah.
Yep, so I think it is the end of April.
Okay.
Do you wanna wait that long?
No. I wanna put, I wanna put in the villager at the, is the villager come out when?
End of April.
End of April, I don't wanna wait that long, we have to, we have to get the word out sooner than that, in my opinion.
What do you suggest to get it out?
The website, have, definitely have it on the website.
They will.
Radio.
Yep, can do that, 'cause I get calls on that.
Only top of two weeks.
Pardon me?
Only top of two weeks.
Just my opinion.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just talking, we're just talking, maybe three weeks, two weeks, three weeks, but.
I'd just like to have a board of five.
We waited last time up.
Been a while.
A month or so. I have no problem, long as we get it out somehow, you know?
We got it out, per, the last time, we got it out, and we had six people apply.
What do you think, Jim? What's your opinion?
I think we'll call all, all this mess, I said I would've stuck around for another. Um, yeah, you're gonna have to have somebody.
I mean, do you wanna wait till, like, the villager comes out, or do you wanna, and send it out the water bill again, or do you think we'll get more candidates, or?
I don't think we will, but.
Do we wanna poll our audience members and ask what they think?
No.
Question for Ann, how did you find out about the?
The water bill.
The water bill, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll get any more people, I guess, I don't know, do you think whoever would've applied already would've applied?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's just a month later, it's the same pool of people.
Yeah. And some of them might not even app, reapply.
And we could try like Facebook or whatever, you know, just to put it out to the public, and then maybe let the people know that I applied last time.
I would make it new deal a trip, so that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Keith, I'd like to. I agree with Keith, I'd, I'd like to get it out, I don't think there's gonna be much more interest in it. I mean, you know, 'cause we're, the positions, I think, Keith, you're up next year, right?
Nineteen, yep.
Yeah, so I mean, so.
Possibly.
And there would be a year on it. Well, it would be possibly a year or two, and yours is up next year, so I mean, it's, you know, eight, nine months before, so we'll take out papers anyway, so. If someone truly wanted to run, they, you know, I mean, it's a good way to get your feet wet, but I mean, I, I think that we've got a good pool. I mean, I thought the interviews were good, I mean, and I'm interested to see what other candidates couldn't make it. You know, shows up in our interviews and sees.
I think there was just one that dropped out, that he just sent a letter in.
Yep.
We can interview him.
So that we still have one, two, four?
So, do we wanna direct Chuck into, like, reach out to the, the candidates that filled out those applications and see if they're still interested? And let's set a date for Aaron.
There has to be some formal way of allowing new people to come forward. There has to be something.
Put it on the website for a couple of weeks.
I'm saying we have to have.
Put it on the website.
I'm reaching out, but there has to be some formal way that we have reached out to people.
The other thing I did, too, is I posted it in, in our couple places.
Okay, but I just, I don't understand the urgency on this one, last one was urgent because of the administrator position and stuff, I don't, I don't see the urgency in this position, but my two cents. But, I'll support whatever, but it has to be reached out for new people to step in, not just the old group, you know?
So if the villager goes out the end of April?
Yeah.
Is that right? And then we would wait like two weeks after for responses?
Yeah.
So the middle of May, we would?
If we would do that.
Okay.
What's, what's your vote, then? Not trying to put you on the spot.
Well, I guess I'll vote to put it in the villager, just to let people have an opportunity to see it again.
You have two of the villager and two of sooner?
You're a tiebreaker, man. We're gonna make you work this last month, man.
More people will see it in their water bill, and they will with the villager. 'Cause I don't think that many people pick up the villager. And I think the water bill is still the best.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking, the water bill.
The water bill is still the best way to get the board out.
They both come on the same time track, does one come out earlier than the other one?
Right about the same time, 'cause we try to have it available when they pick up their water.
When I say the villager, I meant the water bill, too.
They're both, they're both about the same time.
So I, that, I may be misspoken, but I would agree with you.
All right, if that's the vote, then I guess the villager, water bill. Okay.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Resurrection.
Maybe, can I just add one last question? With Ann being the new trustee, there's a, a number of trustee vacancy on the subcommittees. And there's four of them, there are administrative rules, the board review, the alternate check signer, and the library board. So.
Aren't you with?
I'm on the, I'm the county representative.
Yeah.
I thought we combined that position.
We, I never got resolved, so.
Let's combine that position.
Typically what happens when a board member is elected or assigned to one of these, stay on for the length of the term, so. I'm not sure, I guess, I'm not sure, I guess, to mess with, I'm not, I think it was just kind of who volunteered to be on what committees, they think, so. Administrative rules, appeals board, I'm not sure if they've ever met, I don't remember.
I'll take that one.
In ten years.
I already got that one the last time.
I mean, so that's not very active at all, board review, that's once in a while.
That's once a year.
Is that the one you sit down with Bullmider?
Yeah.
I, I don't care, whatever you want to put me on, it's fine with me.
That started a date, though, Mike?
It's on committees, I'm just talking about, no, I'm thinking Ann is not on any.
Gotcha.
I think the library board.
That's a good one, you will love it.
You'll love it, it's great.
I wrote down they have a book club on Saturday.
Yeah, all right.
Maybe they can have it today.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Alternate check signer, which is very rare that that's ever needed, I'm almost, well, it doesn't, if the village president should be that, maybe?
Yeah.
So.
Why do we even have an alternate?
Well, just in case, um.
You and Chris can sign them anyway.
We can, but there could be a chance that we have another.
Chuck's in, you got to be covered here.
So, all right, we've got it covered then, thank you.
So just, just to be clear with the trustee vacancy, how are we going to, are we, are we going to set a timeline that we're going to do this again, or no, are we just going to advertise it and go from there? Because, I mean, they're going to want to know.
We're going to advertise for two weeks.
Two weeks.
So it'll be mid-May.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Cool.
Enough.
Discussion possible action on approving the resolution R one twenty-eighteen, Wisconsin RPC and Green Lakes Basin Tree Planting Program.
No, Darren.
Darren?
This is a resolution giving me authority to apply for a grant through Wisconsin RPC and Great Lakes Reforestation. It's a twenty-five percent matching grant, which we already have money budgeted for in our G O budget for tree replacement and emerald dashboard removal, so it's not going to cost us anything to apply for this grant, and I can get up, up to twenty thousand dollars is what I can apply for.
So this resolution is applying for this.
It's given me the authority to apply for it.
Okay.
How much is the budget?
Um, between project greenup and tree removal, like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six. But this would be in addition to that.
Well, you get the first resolution of the year, that's pretty exciting. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution one dash two thousand eighteen, Wisconsin RPC and Green Lakes Basin Tree Planting Program.
Paul Sackner?
Mr. Sackner, Mike King to approve the, approving of resolution R dash oh-one, dash twenty-eighteen. Any other discussion?
With that, I have until, the deadline is April ninth for me to get the grant in, and we'll find out sometime in May if what's approved.
You have to give them a certain amount that you're applying for.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay, if there's no other discussion.
You got to take a vote.
Yeah, we're going to take it right now.
Okay.
Long favor say aye.
Aye.
And I oppose, motion carried. Any communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I got one, I just wanted to, to mention the Phil's Ordinance, chapter fourteen oh-five, sub-eight for pet littering. Now that, well, I know we're getting some snow, but with spring coming up, if, if there's any, and there's, there's a couple out here that there's just a lot of dog do around, there's one on Wisconsin Avenue, please con, you know, contact Pete and have them send out a letter, because it's, you know, it's just unsanitary, and I might talk to a couple of the neighbors down there, and they, they called a couple times and, you know, and didn't, didn't have the, the folks clean that thing up, but Pete sent something out in there and taking care of it, so if you see something like that, don't be afraid to call down and have them take care of it.
Because it's nasty.
Motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, number one, discussion of personnel issue under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, sub-one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, A E M S staffing.
Second. Mr. Sackner, second, Mike Sackner to go into closed session, we'll call.